Good evening, welcome to the regular school committee meeting of April 24th, 2013. Roll call, Linda. We have Mr. Mullis is not here yet. Mrs. Carroll is unable to make it this evening. And Dr. Quick is not here yet. I'm assuming that Mr. Mullis and Dr. Quick will be coming along. Thank you. Introduction of items by Superintendent, Mrs. Benton.
Good evening, everyone. Before I do the consent agenda, I'd like everybody to take a moment of silence in honor of Sean Collier, class of 2004, who had died a hero this past week, representing all of us. I'd also like to remind the community that all of the schools on Friday will be having a Boston Strong Day. We're inviting all students to wear blue and white. And if they want to participate, to donate a dollar to the Sean Collier Scholarship Fund that will be started by the class of 2004 in his name. We send our sympathies out to the Collier Rogers family and thank them for the son that they had, who has done so much in such a short period of time on earth. Thank you.
Thank you.
Consent agenda, I have two items. The approval of the minutes of April 10th, 2013, and warrants payroll for 10, food service 19, circuit breakers 15, 16, speds 20, general 24, 21, revolving account 227, 228, 229, 230, CF 7, and L 31.
Okay, thank you. I entertain a motion to approve the minutes of April 10th, 2013, regular session. Mrs. Burns?
I make a motion to approve the minutes of April 10th, 2013, regular session.
A second, Mrs. Bonish. Thank you. All those in favor? Unanimous, Linda. All right. I would entertain a motion for a payroll warrant of 41013. I only have to look this way. Right now, Mrs. Bonish.
I'll make a motion to approve the payroll for 41013.
Okay. And a second, Mrs. Burns. All those in favor? Three in favor, one abstain. Thank you, Mrs. Kane abstain. Okay. All right. I'll entertain a motion for FS 19, G 420, G 421, R 227, R 228, R 229, R 230, CF 7, and L 31. Mr. Hayes?
So moved.
Thank you. Perfect. Second, good, Mrs. Burns. All those in favor? Oh, unanimous, Linda. And our next one would be the sped, I entertain a motion to approve warrant for sped 20.
CB break.
And what?
CB.
Oh, CB, sorry, sorry. CB 15, CB 16, and sped. Yes. Thank you. Thank you. Mrs. Bonish, good. Second, Mr. Hayes. All those in favor? Four in favor, abstain. One abstain, Mrs. Burns. And did I hit them all?
Mm-hmm.
Yes, good. We got them all. Okay. Tonight is not a night for the student rep. It's every other time, so we'll be seeing just in May. Our next item would be the superintendent's report.
I have actually four items in my report this evening. The first one is important dates. There are a lot of, can't believe I'm saying this, end of the year festivities coming up in the next month and a half, and I've listed ones that you may want to put into your calendar. Any other concerts, et cetera, that are scheduled that aren't on this list, I will get out to you. Secondly, the NEASC does a two-year progress report. We are required to do a two-year progress report with the NEASC, and I have attached a letter from the NEASC that reviewed the progress report and has announced that our accreditation status still remains intact.
Excuse me, could I just go back?
Sure.
I'm sorry, I was trying to find it and I didn't. Just the, you could get back to us on this. The middle school, high school concert, choir concert, doesn't have a date.
Oh, okay. I'll get that to you.
I think it's this Monday at 7:00. Same as the time above.
Oh, same as the, uh, no.
Fairly certain.
Can't be, because that's when the National Association Society is.
Yeah.
All right, well, we'll see.
I will make sure. I find out before the meeting is over.
Okay, thank you.
Okay. Just, I think I've heard from everyone about the ground, high school groundbreaking ceremony is tomorrow at noon on the green, I mean, on the common. Why do I keep saying the green?
Go back and look at it.
And we hope that anybody who's free attends, and look forward to seeing many of you there. Mini, can you attend?
I'm going to try to, yes.
Okay. All right, thank you. The, if you have passed the common this evening, you'll notice that the portable stage that's used for town meeting is on the common, and the school committee, and selectmen, and high school building committee, and MSBA and elected offices will be on the stage. So you'll have a chair on the stage.
Starts at noon time?
Starts at noon.
Okay.
And lastly, I have left at each of your tables a packet. On April 3rd, I received a letter from the MSBA, Mary Pachetti, who's the Director of Capital Planning, that she had received a letter dated February 28th from Wilmington resident George Lingonfelder. He had concerns that the Wilmington High School schematic design submitted did not accurately portray the environmental conditions that might exist during and after construction. And she, the MSBA asked us to review the letter and respond to the MSBA. So I have the letter for you, as well as our response. And we believe that we have done everything appropriately and properly, and look forward to hearing back from the MSBA.
Can I ask you a quick question? I know I didn't read through all of it, but were these the same concerns that have been, have gone before the DEP the past two times?
Absolutely.
Because it seems to be the same argument.
Yes, they are.
Okay. I just wanted to make sure there was any new surprises.
And I'd just like to add, on behalf of all of us, I'm sure we thank the superintendent for the diligence of this report. It's huge. It takes a long time to read. I'm just wanting to, you need a break in between. And, but really, when you read it, it's like, it's hard to find out where the, it's hard to see where there could be an objection in this. It's very well done. So thank you so much for your time on this, Mrs. Benton.
Well, it was a team effort with Doran Whittier, the town manager, Mr. Aggero, Jocelyn Lesser, Gilbein, whole group.
Well, it shows why things are working, because you're doing teamwork, but it's a great effort. So thank you so much. Okay. Oh, all right. Our next item of business is all business. It's the FY '14 budget adjustments, still related to the middle school. So I've asked Mr. Hayes to take over at this point.
I got a brief reprieve. This is fantastic. So Superintendent Benton, did you want to introduce the agenda item?
Sure. At the last meeting, it was clear to me that there was not enough support by the school committee to move forward with the middle school schedule. If you recall back when I did the budget process, the recommendation was a reduction of 4.6 staff members from the middle school and from the high school because of enrollment decline. The middle school will have, in the sixth grade next year, where we are projecting at least 27 students less than this year, which means a whole class. Therefore, we had recommended 4.6 cuts, which were, which included the elimination of the computer ed positions, if you recall, in some foreign language, and pieces of PE music. Because that is not going to be happening, I am recommending the following reductions. We will be moving to a half a team in sixth grade, so there'll be two and a half teams in sixth grade. We're going to reduce the middle school by one science teacher, which actually will happen through attrition, there's a retirement there. One social studies teacher, which is the least senior non-professional status. We will not go forward with the new position of the sped administrator for elementary and middle school. We are eliminating the 0.6 math co-teacher position at the, that's wrong, math co-teacher position, sorry. No, yeah, that's right. This didn't line up correctly, I apologize. In the self-contained class, that just didn't, didn't, was not achieving the goals we wanted. And lastly, we will postpone filling the technology integration specialist new position at the high school for a year.
So thank you very much for that report, Superintendent Benton. Did any committee members have any questions or comments? Mrs. Burns?
I did. I was just curious now, what is, what is being done in addressing the MCAS piece currently until we can revisit this?
Frankly, I haven't even thought of that. I've been, I was so focused on trying something different that I knew could work, that now we're back to what we had, and that's going to take some thinking.
Is it possible maybe addressing those concerns that we might have had, and just taking what was created and seeing if it would be possible to tweak those areas of concern, or?
We went through at least 30 different scenarios, Dr. Burn, around trying to add a little bit of time to just English Language Arts and Math. The problem with scheduling at the middle school, as with the high school, is you have shared staff. So you cannot change a schedule at the middle school without it affecting staffing at the high school, i.e. your band and your strings. So there was, there's no way to add minutes to math and English Language Arts without increasing staff. What we are doing, if you noticed, I did not say a reduction of an English Language Arts or a math teacher at the sixth grade level. What we are doing is keeping the class size at 18 for six, all sixth graders in English Language Arts and Mathematics, which will absolutely have an effect. And the social studies and science, by eliminating a staff member, those classes will be a little larger, it'll be a 21. So I think the addition of the English Language Arts and the Mathematics teacher will certainly assist with our focus on the MCAS scores. But other than that, we, I mean, we did not budget for after-school, maybe, you know, we can look at grants for after-school programs. Those in the past have been successful at the elementary level. That'll be a summer project.
Thank you.
That was a great question, MJ, and thanks for the response, Superintendent Benton. Did any other committee members have any questions or comments on the report, on the update? Okay, so we're all set, and I'm going to hand the meeting back over to Chairwoman Kane.
Thank you, Mr. Hayes. Okay. Our next item is new business, and the first part being the end of the year report.
Attached, before you this evening is the report on applying agreed-upon procedures over compliance applicable to Massachusetts School District's end-of-the-year financial report. How's that for a muscle for a title? For fiscal year ending June 30th, 2012, from our accountant Roselli Clark and Associates. This is a standard operating procedure, and Mr. Aggero can respond to any questions that you may have.
Do I want to have any questions, Mr. Aggero? We've seen, we've had this before. Okay. Okay, thank you. All set. Our next item is the draft technology plan. Superintendent Benton?
I put in your packet this evening the draft technology plan that OIT Director Neil Ellis prepared. We have it on the agenda for the next meeting, but since Vice Chair Robert Hayes has been on, served on the technology task force for all the years that he's been a school committee member, I wanted to give him an opportunity to comment on his last evening as a school committee member.
Sure. Great. Well, I appreciate that, Superintendent Benton, and I will take advantage of that. So I just wanted to focus primarily on two areas of the plan. I read the plan cover to cover twice, and a lot of notes and highlights, but in the interest of time, I'm just going to focus on two areas. The first area I wanted to focus on is the technology integration specialists, or the instructional technology specialists, they're kind, their terms are kind of used, interchanged. So on page 10, they're defined. "The instructional technology specialists provide instruction, training, and resources to facilitate the use of technology in the classroom. These specialists work in the classroom with teachers to develop curriculum material and lesson plans that take advantage of technology to more effectively educate our student population." So there's your definition. On page 20, it talks about the need for technology specialists. Neil writes, quote, "We are definitely lacking in our technology integration staff. The district is very aware of this fact and has planned to increase the number of ITS staff in the coming years." Now unfortunately, ironically, just two minutes ago, we found out that due to last week, last meeting's vote, we're gonna not fill the high school technology integration specialist position. We're gonna let that, we're gonna postpone that at least a year. So unfortunate timing that I bring this up. But, so the Wilmington Public Schools has requested through the budget process for an elementary integration specialist for the coming 2013, 2014 school year. And so frankly, I would question if one integration specialist at the elementary level is enough, especially where they'd be dealing with four, potentially even six schools. So according to table six on page 20, the state benchmark ratio for technology integration specialists is one specialist for every 60 to 120 teachers. But in Wilmington, the current ratio is one technology specialist for every 219 teachers. And so even adding a third specialist, we're still not meeting the recommended state benchmark. And then just to reemphasize the need, on page 44, under some of the action items that Neil lays out on that, on those page, action item, reviewing existing technology curriculum and established benchmarks currently being met. Start year 2009, percentage complete 50%. Comments, we still have a lot of work to do in order to continually review where we are and what we need to do. Next action item, establish a curriculum integration committee. Start year 2009, percentage complete 50%. Comments, we established a tech vertical team at the elementary level, still need one at the secondary level. Action item, integrate new technology standards into curriculum. Start year 2009, percentage complete 40%. Comments, this has been done at the elementary level with the help of the former technical integration specialist, technology integration specialist, and this has not been done at the secondary level. And then action item, review new technology curriculum and determine whether benchmarks have been met. Start year 2010, and then on an annual basis, percentage complete 0%. Comments, have not had the resources for this type of evaluation. And so, and then, on a related note to my first primary thing I wanted to say, I had to slip this in there because I saw it on page 43. Quote, "This past year, we were able to fund the hiring of a part-time library coordinator. Unfortunately, the funding is only for a .2 FTE position, which means that she works only one day a week in this role. I would like to increase the number of days for this position by applying more leadership for the libraries. I believe they can accomplish many of our technology integration goals that pertain to precisely what the library and media specialists are a resource for." Amen. And then, and then I, so, and the other thing I wanted to bring up related to this topic, first topic, is, you know, in the document's 53 pages long, and it's supposed to cover us through the year 2018, but there's only one paragraph on e-textbooks, on electronic textbooks. It's on page 43. And it says, quote, "We should look toward increasing our use of electronic textbooks in the future," close quote. And that's essentially what the entire paragraph says. And so, you know, and I would also note that on page 45 and 46, the five-year budget projections, there's no inclusion of digital textbooks. So, so once I'm off the committee, I hope this committee may want to ask for more specificity on what the plans going forward are regarding e-textbooks. And, but I did want to say, I absolutely love the five-year budget, and I'm really pleased to see the district being allowed to ask for technology funding outside of its operation budget, and instead going through a capital request at town meeting. I think that's a huge change. I don't know how many people noticed that, but that's something that I, you know, I saw past couple of years, and we're seeing moving in the future. Okay. And then the other thing I wanted to talk about, believe it or not, is bring your own device. And real quickly, so on page, yeah. So on page 20, it talks about the need, quote, "The number of computers per student is far from where the state would like us to be by the 2014, 2015 school year. By that time, the state expects us to have one device for every student in the district. There is only one way to possibly meet this goal by that time, and that is to establish a bring-your-own-device plan of hardware distribution." And then page 21, I've heard the analogy before used by Mr. Ellis, and I believe Superintendent Benton, but I'll just quickly mention it again because I like it. Quote, "For modern students, schools are behind in their ability to mirror modern life and times. For instance, imagine if you worked for a delivery company and drove a shiny new Ferrari to work every day. When you arrive at work, your boss tells you to take a horse and carriage out of the stable and deliver packages around the city. Then at the end of the day, you get back in your Ferrari and you drive home. So if that was the case, you would seriously start to wonder if your boss knew what he was doing." Or he or she, the quote says he, I was a he or she, was doing. So now is the time to bring the Wilmington School District up to speed with the modern way of life of its teachers and students. And then real briefly, something that I had asked for a couple of years ago, and perhaps we were given it, but I forgot, but I saw it again in this plan, was the cost analysis. So on page 21 and 22. "If the district provided a netbook or low-end laptop to every student and teacher for around roughly $400, with a replacement factored in every three years, plus spare units and replacement parts, plus the need to hire three more permanent technicians for tech support, the annual cost of a one-to-one program if the district were to provide the student with the laptop averages out to $613,000 a year." And that's, that's nearly half a million dollars just in devices. So that would be an annual expense. The solution to, and quote, "The solution to the one-to-one initiative is to let students bring their own devices," referred to as bring-your-own-device program. "This solution leverages the money already spent by parents on devices for their children for use in school." And the one thing that you, that has been mentioned before, but it wasn't in the plan, and I'd like to see it in the plan, is the caveat that if the student cannot afford the device, that the district will provide one to them. I've seen that before, but I didn't see it in this particular plan.
I think I saw it. There was a reference to it.
Did I?
Yeah, there was a reference in there, so.
I apologize.
I don't know what page, but it was definitely there.
Probably, we're on page 22 then. And, and then I just have other random notes that I won't bore people with, but real quick, I'll just mention some of them. The, I noticed that we have, we have, on paper, we have a five-year computer replacement cycle, but in actuality, it seems like it's more seven, eight, nine year. So, you know, I like, you know, once the funding is available to, to really try to stick with that five-year, you know, especially over the next couple of years before we go to one-to-one. Looking forward to seeing wireless at all the schools, and I'm excited to have that guest network ability there. I agree with all the security upgrades discussed, the proximity card reader, the security camera upgrades, the installation of the Raptor security system. Looking forward to the district-wide adoption of the Aspen Family Portal. That's, I know, being piloted, and it will be piloted six through 12 next year, I think. As a librarian, as a part-time, you know, archivist, I liked the talk about all the records up in the Roman House attic and getting those digitized. The professional development, the Wilmington University, the training the teachers, the new clause in the contract. I agree with Mr. Ellis. I know it's slightly controversial, but I agree with Mr. Ellis in terms of reevaluating the middle school technology curriculum and really trying to integrate technology into everyday learning. I liked what I heard about potential collaboration with WCTV, the upgrades, you know, and I know it's a problem, but I'd like to see the software, the Windows and the Microsoft Office upgraded, but then I know we run into compatibility issues and things like that. But I'd really like to see those upgraded. There was talk about how the graphics lab at the high school is using 2007 software, and it's gonna be, it's scheduled to be replaced in 2015. So I'd like to see that replaced before 2015. Telephone system replacement, has that already happened at the special ed office?
Yes.
Okay, that's good to know. That sounded awful.
And about one, well, just one today, so.
Oh, good. That's just, to not have an adequate telephone system in this day and age is unbelievable. Neil demonstrated the new online work order system at the last meeting. That sounds fantastic, and I know he's in the process of wheeling that out. And, you know, I would like to see, I know it may not be feasible, but just to throw it out there, there's a section that talks about, do students have access to computers after school? And I know at some of the elementary school levels, we have the media labs with the computers, the libraries open, you know, after school time. And I know at some point, we had it at the high school level. I think that might have gone away, I'm not sure. But if we can look at, you know, keeping the middle school and high school library open, particularly the middle school library that's not near the public library, that would be something I'd be interested in. And then my, my last question and my concern is, it says, so 90% of the teachers participated in the Massachusetts Technology Self-Assessment Tool, and only 73% of that 90%, I should, maybe I shouldn't say only, but 73% of that 90% mastered it, quote unquote. But we want 100%, you know, mastery. So, so if you, you know, if you look at all those numbers, so more than 30% of our teachers haven't yet, you know, mastered that test. And I, and I'm just wondering if, you know, if there's a, if there's a, you know, what we're doing to combat that. And that's it. So I apologize for taking up five minutes, but I, I've only missed one technology task force meeting in the last three years, and I had a lot to talk about.
That was excellent.
That's it. So I got.
Excellent.
That's the abbreviated version, by the way.
Excellent. Well, all your points were well, well-taken, and as we go over these again before next week's meeting.
Sure.
Definitely look at those points. Thank you so much.
Yeah, I was thinking that.
We'll see.
It's already written out. You'll be in the public comments.
We'll finally have someone in the public comments.
I was just, I can't believe, I was just thinking, if we see Robert and the Pope in the seats here, we will know, we'll be all looking at our agenda. What is it?
I'm trying to make a clean break here, but I, but, but.
We'd love to have you back.
If nothing else, Mr. Ellis will hear from me via email. And, you know, I didn't stress it here, but via email, I was just going to stress how amazing the report is. Maybe I should have led off with that. I thought that was just a fantastic report. I don't think we've ever gotten a report, on my three years in the school committee, that was so specific, so many details, plan after plan, objective after goal. It was, it was really well done, and I want to thank the technology task force, but in particular, Director Ellis, he did a wonderful job.
He did. And it just, it just reeked of passion, and.
Yeah.
You can tell he loves his job, which is wonderful. Okay. Next item of business, public comments.
Were you looking for the date for the middle school, high school course?
Yes.
It's Wednesday. May 1st.
Yes.
Thank you. 7:00. According to the website.
Okay, great. Thank you very much.
And the underclass awards on the 15th is at 6:00. And the senior scholarship night on the 30th is at 6:30. You'll all get invitations to those, but you might want to put those dates on your calendar.
Okay.
Thank you.
Do we have any other reports tonight? Mr. Hayes?
So the CPAC is meeting tomorrow night at 6:30 in the high school library. They're having a workshop called Understanding My Child's Learning Style. And the, quote, "The different ways students take in and generate information can greatly affect how and whether they succeed in school and later in life. The presenter will identify the features of different learning styles, and through interactive discussion with the group participants, will explore how parents and teachers can harness a child's learning style to help him or her achieve success in many different environments, including the classroom." It's 6:30 on, so tomorrow, that would be, what, Thursday, April 25th? And that they asked me not to give out the email address, but additional information is on the CPAC website.
Excellent. Thank you. Do we have any others? Any other committees? No? I'd like to take a moment here to interrupt the meeting for a second, and on behalf of the school committee.
What is this? I hope I get one of those tickets, passes, whatever they're called.
Your wish is my command.
Oh, that's great.
The task would be in here.
Great. Should I open it now, or should I wait?
I think, you could open it, because, open it. Because I want to read one of the things.
Let me get this stuff out of here. I don't know where people put this stuff.
It's pretty.
Oh, all right. Do you want to read this for me?
Yes. Okay. This says, "Presented to Robert Hayes in honor of the dedicated commitment to the students of the Wilmington Public Schools for service on the Wilmington School Committee from 2010 to 2013."
All right. I'm not a hugger. But, thank you. Thank you all very much. I did have a statement prepared.
Of course you did.
Get it all out with the nameplate. We get our statements. Did you want to start?
Chairman, are the passes of students in Wilmington?
Oh, it is.
Oh, yes, sorry, he's so excited, he missed that one. There it is.
Robert, on behalf of the students and staff from Wilmington Public Schools, I want to sincerely thank you for your dedication, commitment, tenacity in attending more school events than any school committee member I have ever come across. You have been a cheerleader on the sidelines for every possible group of students in Wilmington, from athletics, to drama, to music, to the arts. You've never let us down. I truly, truly appreciate the incredible support. You've asked the tough questions, you've challenged all of us, sometimes late at night on the night before school committee.
Look at you, Paul.
With three pages of questions, but they were good questions, and I just want to acknowledge how much we appreciate your contribution to the Wilmington Public Schools, and hopefully you'll come back someday. So, thank you.
Great, well, thank you very much. I appreciate the kind words, Mrs. Benton.
Would anyone else like to say a few words? Are we all gonna be shy? Dr. Quick?
Robert, I just wanted to say thank you so much for, you know, one of the beauties of what I find the school committee with the group that we have is it's a very eclectic, very differing backgrounds, everybody has their strengths, and that was one of the things I'm definitely going to miss, is the fact that you are that person who is, you know, you're there, you're, you don't have to be, and you are, and I really appreciated it as a school committee member who doesn't always have that type of time. So again, like I said, it's been a wonderful time to have you for those past three years. Thank you so much, Robert.
Thank you, Dr. Quick. Appreciate the words.
Robert, I just wanted to thank you for all your help that you've given me personally and the help you've given the town. You're always there to answer questions. You are known to the town as a person that has the answers and who to go to when we need to know something. So I appreciate that. I hope you continue doing what you're doing, and thank you for everything. You will be missed.
Appreciate that, Mr. Gillis. Thank you very much for the comments.
I'd like to say a couple of words. Robert and I go back like six, six or nine, maybe, no, six years, maybe six years. We started out at the library together, and whenever there was anything that needed to be done in the library, it didn't matter if we were all there too, Robert volunteered for it. He was incredible, his energy level was incredible. And so at one point, I had encouraged Robert to run for the school committee because I really felt that he had what it takes to be a school committee person. And I have to tell you, I'm probably not supposed to say this, but because Robert is of a younger age, the people he had to deal with on the, for the library, we were all older, let's admit it, we were, and he kept us young, he kept us going with the ideas of the things that we could do for fundraising. He was always there to, you know, carry through. He never, never left us, as Superintendent Benton had said, he never left us on the lurch, and how are we gonna do this, or what are we gonna do? He was always there. Then he comes onto the school committee, and talking about his questions, he absolutely, he, I've never seen anyone go through a packet the way that Robert goes through this packet. And he, ultimately, his ultimate goal is not to just go through and find things. He noticed that he never, ever gave us a negative when he was going through them. He never insulted anybody or said, why weren't these questions answered?
I never met you, anyway.
You never did, and you never did. And it was always, you know, I could use this information, what do we need to know to make our decision better, to make us able to make a decision that was more meaningful for the students, and that really helped the kids in Wilmington? And I can't help but think, no matter where we go now, he was at the Democratic Breakfast the other day, so I think we're moving into that area of politics, maybe? And I think he's still going to be connected with the library, and I think he's going to work through his job and things that he can learn about encouraging the use of libraries. He's been really single-handed on this board, encouraging the use of the library and making it more accessible to students. And I have to say, I've never met the likes of Robert as far as enthusiasm, getting his, getting his ideas on something and bringing them forward, and then if they don't work, okay. Doesn't get upset, but then goes on, not in front of us. Then he moves on to what he, what he's looking for. He's got his focus, his focus was the children of Wilmington for the last three years. It truly was. It shows throughout the town, the respect that he has for someone his age, the respect that the people in town have for you, Robert. I know, I hope that you see it, because it is incredibly impressive, and we are really going to miss you on this board.
Oh, hard to follow that. I appreciate the kind words from everybody, especially you, Chairwoman Kane. So I did have a statement, and it's, got it all on one piece of paper, which was my goal. It's, the font size is eight, though. So that's, so let's see here. So, so 10 years ago, I graduated from Wilmington High School, class of 2003. My senior year, I was vice president of student council and co-editor of the school newspaper. And serving in those positions, I started paying attention to the school committee, following it in the press and watching the meetings. And I, something about the school committee, I still haven't quite put my finger on it now that I'm leaving, but it's something about it, I really, I become hooked, and I haven't missed watching a meeting or participating in a meeting since 10 years ago. So I set a goal for myself my senior year in high school, before I was even sure what college I was going to go to, or what I was gonna major in, or what I wanted to do as a profession, I set a goal that I was gonna serve at least one term on the Wilmington School Committee. So in those past 10 years, I have worked full-time while spending four years in college, then three years in grad school, and then my last three years on this board. Professionally and personally, I, I'm not gonna tear up, I'm not gonna tear up. Okay, so professionally and personally, now is the right time in my life to take a step back from elected office and let someone else step up in my place. And in my notes, I was going to say, there's several people in the audience, but there's only one person in the audience, best of luck. So I will cross that off. By my account, three very suitable replacements are vying for my seat next week. I will continue to give back to the community that has given me so much, and I'll just do it in a more behind-the-scenes capacity, not anything democratic or whatever you were alluding to. So I wasn't the best school committee ever, but I was the best school committee member I could be. I can leave knowing I did a lot more good than harm, and it was alluded to tonight by several speakers, but I had a philosophy since day one, since joining the board. I pretty much volunteered for every committee assignment presented to me, and I never turned anything down. And so I wasn't gonna run through the list, but my mother said, you should run through the list. So I'm gonna run through the list. I was vice chair, I was secretary, I served on the policy subcommittee, the technology task force, my favorite committee, have them all, as we know, the high school building committee, a close second, special education parent advisory council, starting last year. I served on the anti-bullying committee for a year, I was legislative representative for a year, and I must say, Mrs. Burns is doing a fantastic job in that role, I'm glad to see that role expanding. I was on the high school library committee last year, sick bank subcommittee my first year. I've been on negotiation teams for superintendent, for secretaries, and for ed assistants, and in fact, we met this afternoon, working up to the very end. Secretary, and then thanks to, thanks to Chairwoman Kane, I became very involved at the state level through the mass association of school committees. I followed in her footsteps and became Secretary-Treasurer of Division One. I was on the special education committee of the MASC, I was on the advocacy committee of the MASC, I was Wilmington's delegate to the MASC Annual Conference for two years. And my favorite role that I got to play was being chair of the Wilmington High School Campaign Committee. And even though I was chair, you know, that was really a committee, it was a committee of 20 people, and all 20 were leaders, and they all pulled their weight, people like Manny and Ginny and Judy O'Connell, Mike Newhouse, a lot of great people. That was the ultimate grassroots team effort. It was fantastic. Okay. So, all told, I've attended, I've attended more than 200 meetings in the past three years, I actually kept track of that. And so I've prepared for more than 200 meetings in the past three years. And when it came to the school committee meetings, I was, I always prided myself in reading our school committee packets from cover to cover and asking lots of questions before the meeting. To be truthful, I really won't miss attending these meetings, and, or preparing or researching for them, but what I will miss, however, is something that Superintendent Benton alluded to, is attending all the amazing events that the students participate in, the band concerts, string concerts, pops concerts, choral concerts, marcha pella, the plays, history fair, science and technology fair, STEM night, although I missed it this week, I was there last year, art shows, National Honor Society induction, foreign language cultural festival, talent shows, battle of the bands, scholarship night, underclassmen awards, graduation, and all the sporting events. And I can say that I went to every varsity sport, boys or girls, except for golf in my three years. I've been to at least one of each. So, frustrated I missed golf. So I'll miss being a part of this amazing Wilmington school community. So I want to thank my family, particularly my parents and my friends for their support over the past three years. They have always kept me grounded and reminded me to laugh a little and have fun whenever you can. And in closing, I have, and I didn't touch on anything substantive about all the successes we had as a team over the year, but I think I'm gonna write a letter to the editor and cover that. I was doing more personal emotional in this particular thing, I didn't want to, you know, obviously we did a lot of great things that I'll talk about at another time. But in closing, I have enjoyed being part of this team, and I'm going to enjoy watching from the sidelines as this team continues to do amazing things for the children of Wilmington. Wilmington is very fortunate to have Joanne Benton as its superintendent, Kate Burnham as its assistant superintendent, Paul Rogiro as its finance director, and MJ Burns, Manny Mullis, Ginny Bonish, Leslie Quick, Kathleen Carroll, and someone who I consider to be my mentor, Peggy, I knew I was gonna break at that particular moment, Peggy Kane as its school committee members. Wilmington is very fortunate. And that's it for me.
We have your email, you have our email.
Besides your noon tag, there is one more present that we'd like to give to you. Tomorrow, I would like, I have for you a shovel for you to take with you, and thanks for the leadership that you provided in getting us the high school that has been my dream. So, thank you on behalf of the entire community for your work on that, and tomorrow, we will acknowledge it.
Looking forward to it. Thank you. I was so close, so close.
Thank you. Do we have any correspondence? No. Okay. Future meeting dates and agenda items, May 8th would be the vote on the technology plan, the report on electronic devices pilot, and May 22nd will be the other meeting in May. I think we should, what, Robert? I would entertain a motion to adjourn, Robert?
So moved.
Second, Dr. Quick, all those in favor? Good night, everybody. Thank you very much.